Okay, we're ready to start. So, welcome to the regular board meeting for San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for this Tuesday, September 17th, 2013. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To our flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, open, and just.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Groom?
Present.
Supervisor Slocum?
Here.
Supervisor Tessier?
Here.
President Horsley?
Here. Now time for public comment. And first person speaking is Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Horsley, honorable members of the board, Mr. Byers, Mr. Holland, and my fellow veteran, Mr. Malby. Thank you for your service to the county. It is appreciated. Please pull consent agenda items numbers 14 and 16, the $2.6 million contract extension with Project 90 and the $316,000 contract with Muniz Palo Alto. We hear from those who benefited from psychiatric health care because they recovered enough to speak out in favor of services. We hear from those who denounced the asylums for roeh housing the mentally ill but never managed to locate funding for the care that was supposed to replace the asylums. We don't hear from the same people who are still voiceless today, those who are too seriously mentally ill to advocate for themselves. We don't hear from those persons living with mental illness who do not understand their need to seek treatment voluntarily because they are homeless, imprisoned, or dead like the shooter back in Washington DC. A member of a treatment-resistant population of veterans whose father says he came back with PTSD. Everybody seems to ignore that. I want you to pull the items from the consent agenda because 20% of Prop 63 funding is designated for prevention and early intervention. And according to the California State Auditor, the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission provided little oversight to county programs, particularly as it relates to evaluating whether these programs are effective. Laura's Law is an evidence-based practice that provides positive results for those living with serious mental illness complicated by anosognosia. Please vote to implement Laura's Law.
Next speaker is Harvey Blight, followed by Melissa Lukens.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm appalled that the seats are so empty. To me, I've studied law for 15 years, and I don't think what we have here in San Mateo County is a reflection of the democratic process in law. A monopoly to me is the closest thing there is to a dictatorship. I think we have a monopoly. When you tell me I can only speak two minutes, you're the ones that should be only speaking two minutes, not me. I represent the people. Because of my wages, at least three of you here have at least $5 million worth of assets. You don't represent the rank-and-file people in this county any longer. And there's only one thing I can say to you. You're allowing government to plunder the people. And the Bible says, and I'm just wanting, you can take this down and look it up in your Bible, Matthew 15:8, I don't have time to go into it, Matthew 13:15. But basically what it says, that if you don't come in to the fold of the sheep through the proper door, you're going to roast in hell. That's my message to you. If you continue operating this county government the way you are, I guarantee you, and I'm not Jesus, so you don't have to take it too seriously, do you? You're going to roast in hell. This is not proper government. This two-minute stuff is garbage. You have just came over to my house with the sheriff, and Mr. Byers over there allowed it, I don't know where he was, and the, Mr. Egglemeyer in Building and Planning, and took a 14-by-14-foot building that sat there for 40 years. Forty years. You want to know more about it? My phone number is 650-364-1374. I suggest you do something about it because you're going to do this to the wrong person. I'm a Christian, so I don't hate any of you. I feel sorry for every one of you, because like I say, I think you're going to roast in hell if you keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blight. Melissa Lukens next.
Good morning, supervisors, Mr. Holland, Mr. Malby, and Mr. Byers. My name is Melissa Lukens. I'm the Executive Director of Cora. And actually, I want to thank you for the hard work that you are involved in, engaged in, and trying to make hard decisions about the measure A funding. But I wanted to propose to you this morning that Cora has two specific urgent needs. One of them has to do with our Community Outreach and Education Program. As you know, I've mentioned before, since the recession, we haven't had essentially a prevention and outreach program. We handle 10,000 calls a year, and we'd like to work more upstream than downstream, but we've been hampered by the fact that we have a halftime position to respond to hundreds of requests for education in the community related to domestic violence and have no one to meet that need. So my proposal before you today is to help us support that effort. The second has to do with actually a collaborative grant that was, an eight-year grant that we had in collaboration with San Mateo County Legal Aid Society through the Department of Justice that we recently learned, I believe, through the sequestration was not funded. That means for Cora, some specifics, but for the collaboration for San Mateo County Legal Aid as well, a hit on our temporary restraining order clinic, serious effect or pro bono panel, and for Cora specifically, this $70,000 hit means that approximately 100 clients will be forced to handle a very complex and challenging legal system by themselves, often without the means to handle it or the language to address it. Approximately 200 calls on our legal line as well will not be answered. That means that roughly when this room is filled, that that many people will not be served this year. Those are people that come to us desperate for help and are afraid for themselves and their children. When they're part of our continuum of care and they are receiving mental health services or shelter and we discover that they need legal support, we'll just have to hand them a card. And I'd hate to have to do that after all of the hard work that we've been through and also the fact that we're the only non, no-cost agency to whom they have to turn. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. It is now time to set the agenda and to approve the, or not, the consent agenda items. Anything off of consent?
Move to approve the consent calendar and set the agenda.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, item number one actually is going to be at 1:30 PM. Can I take the liberty of moving item number four first on a sheriff? It's an ordinance amending section 3.52.200 of chapter 5.32 Firearms of Title III Public Safety, Morals, and Welfare of the San Mateo County Ordinance Code relating to the possession and sale of firearms by county law enforcement officials. Now, normally, I usually let other board members speak first, but I wanted to speak about this personally because this actually was something that was worked on by a dear friend, colleague, who's no longer with us, Mike Nevin. And I think Mark Church and myself, and the idea was that we didn't want the firearms to, predecessors, my predecessors used to sell all the guns, actually, the ones they seized as well as firearms that they would turn over when we turned over our guns. And what I really intended on this, and I think somehow got lost, is I intended for us to be able to sell those guns or give them to deputies as they retire from service or if they, you know, it didn't have to be retirement, but if we were changing guns. And the idea would have been to allow the deputy to buy it at some nominal fee, I didn't care if it was $1 or $5 or $100, that they carried with them. And also under the proviso that the gun would not be resold, but somehow when we wrote the ordinance, we wrote it so tight that we weren't able to do that. And I'll tell you, in my own career, we changed guns a couple of times and there was a, at least one of them I would have loved to have kept, not because I'm, you know, I just, because of, when you, you know, when you're a peace officer and you carry a gun, that's kind of a part of you. And it meant a lot to me because this particular gun was stamped with San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. And so, you know, if, if, if my colleagues agree, I'd like to work with the Sheriff, County Council to modify it so that deputies can in fact purchase the guns that many of them have carried for maybe as long as 30 years, although I don't know, maybe they've changed guns more often than that. But, you know, gun, it does, it's, it's, it does have an attachment to the, to deputies. And I know it had an attachment for me. I would not, the last gun we had, which was, I didn't like because it was so hard to clean, but the other one that we originally had, in fact, John Quinlan probably remember when we used to carry the .357, it was a revolver, it was a beautiful gun. I would have kept that, put it, you know, for a family heirloom. And in any case, if that is the pleasure of the board, that's what I would like to do, unless others have different feelings. Supervisor Tessier?
I just like to make a comment. I have no problem with our deputies or sworn officers, I should say, purchasing their guns. I don't have an issue with that. What I do have an issue with is selling guns back to the manufacturer. I mean, we just, we just did a gun buyback, and to me, you know, that's sort of set the tone for our county. And I think we turn around and sell them and then they're going to be sold again likely to anyone and everyone. It sort of defeats the purpose of what we tried to accomplish. Having sworn officers buy their guns, I have no problem with that. I mean, so, I mean, I would even go and approve that section today, but eliminate the other part and not resell to manufacturers, but have those other guns destroyed. I mean, that's, otherwise it flies in the face of what we already did. So that's, that's my thoughts.
Let me go down to Supervisor Groom first.
I concur with both, with you, Don, and with Adrian.
Supervisor Pine?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. It's completely inappropriate for us to sell weapons to a firearm manufacturer who'll then be able to sell those, sell those weapons at somewhat of a discounted price and put those guns in circulation. I'm vehemently opposed to that, and I understand, but I'm okay with the notion that our sworn personnel who are well-trained and may have, you know, some, you know, attachment to the gun, that's a completely different situation, but vehemently opposed to this idea of selling to firearms manufacturers.
Totally concur with the earlier comments. Just for clarification, does that mean you're still going to work with the sheriff, or are we just changing the language here?
Well, if we just, I guess we could just change the language here. Let me have, we have one speaker, David Wozniak.
Good morning. Supervisor Horsley. On behalf of the San Mateo County Deputy Sheriff's Association, pretty much every deputy shares what you were saying earlier. They would love the opportunity to buy their, their gun that they've had all their lives. Mine, in my case, I was, I was started here as a reserve at 20 years old, and I've had that gun my entire life, and I would, I would love to be able to eventually retire with it. I just wanted to point out that the guns that they are proposing are not gun buybacks. They're not seized from property, seized as evidence. They would be sold to deputy sheriffs. And if you do choose to eliminate the firearms sale back to the manufacturer, our service guns, one of the reasons bringing this forward, are near the end of their service life. And the current guns we have are discontinued. Manufacturer no longer makes replacement parts. So at some point, I would imagine the sheriff would come to you asking for money to replace those guns, and I hope it would meet a warm reception.
Sure. So, well, our county council, can we just change the ordinance or modify it here and then?
Yes, you have two options. One is to, is to reintroduce it at a later date with a cleaned-up language, or the second, which is what you're asking, is absolutely, the board is free to approve the ordinance with an amendment, and it sounds like the amendment would be to eliminate subdivision little I, I, which is the firearm manufacturers, exception to the general rule of no sale of county firearms. So you could, you are free today to amend the ordinance to remove that section if that's your pleasure.
Can we also amend it to indicate that the deputy sheriff who buys it can't resell it?
That's good. Well, again, you're, you are free to make any amendments that you think are appropriate today. I want to think a little bit about that, any legal issues involved in that particular proposed amendment.
Well, maybe we should look, think about, you know, I wouldn't want them necessarily to lose money on it, but if they're going to get, if they wanted to get rid of it for some reason, they should be able to sell it back to the county for destruction. And if they should, if they've paid fair market value, they ought to get fair market value back. Am I making this too complex? Should we?
Yeah. Mr. President Horsley?
Yes.
Why don't we, why don't we send it back to county council and the sheriff and you to work out some of those details?
Would that be acceptable, the undersheriff is here?
The amendments, honorable board, the amendments that you've proposed would be acceptable to us, and we would be happy to work with the Deputy Sheriff's Association to come up with a document where they would commit to not selling the weapon and/or we, the sheriff's office, would purchase the weapon back from that employee to ensure that those weapons do not go out into the general public.
Now, is that going to be an acceptable amendment, or do I need to go back and change the ordinance?
If, I'm sorry, we're having a sidebar here on another proposal. If undersheriff Bolanos can repeat the proposal, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. We would be very, we would accept the amendment to only sell the weapons to our current deputy sheriffs, sworn members of the organization, and we would be happy to work with the Deputy Sheriff's Association to come up with a document whereby they commit to not resell the weapon, and if they want to resell it, we would commit to purchasing it back from them. And we would work with your office to come up with a reasonable document that would codify that.
Sure, I'd be happy to work with the sheriff's office on such a document. I mean, we have to think through sort of the enforcement issues that are attendant to that proposal, but I think that that could work.
Perhaps rather than resell, transfer ownership might be a better phrase to use.
Yeah. Supervisor?
Yes, Supervisor.
I, you know, I defer to you to work out those details. My input would be, I like that idea of the limitation on transfer ownership, and again, I defer to you, but I'm not sure there'd be a need to sell it back because I got the sense that we would, it might not be, it'd be fairly nominal or cost to move it to the sheriff, deputy sheriffs in the first place. So if, as you had described, that it was more of a keepsake, that we were not trying to make money on it.
Exactly.
So there probably wouldn't be a need then for them to sell it back, you know?
Right.
Maybe, maybe if I could just make a suggestion, I think, I think we could give direction for the document for the amendment, making very clear we're not selling any guns back to a manufacturer, and the only guns that we would allow to be sold would be those that are sworn officers can, can buy their own gun. I don't want to have them being able to buy a four and five gun. They can buy their own gun, and at the end of the day, if they choose to not keep it, that they have, the transfer of ownership has to come back to the sheriff's department for disposal.
Yeah, that's very acceptable to the sheriff's office.
So we'll bring that back, and that'd be, I'd like to work with you on that, Carlos, as well.
Okay.
That would be, just make sure the original intent, and I do think that, I do want the deputy to be able to buy their own gun back.
Yeah, and I think that we can certainly work with you, President Horsley, and the sheriff's office to, to try to refine the language to, in a way that's acceptable to the board. So I think that that could work, but I'd like to spend a little time kind of on the detail.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Let's go now to item number two, County Manager's Report.
Mr. President, members of the board, my report this morning is a wrap-up of the 2013 legislative session. The governor now has until October 13th to take action on the legislation that now is before him, that has passed both houses of the legislature. The legislature sent to the governor, as always, a number of bills of importance to the county. Among those are AB 4 from Assemblymember Amiano, a measure that would prevent law enforcement officials from detaining people based solely on immigration status unless they have been convicted of a felony or other serious crime. SB 644, 649, rather, a measure that would give local prosecutors discretion to decide whether a person charged with possessing a small amount of illegal drugs, drugs, should be charged with a felony or misdemeanor. SB 105 by Senator Steinberg, a prison population plan that we've discussed already. We understand that the governor has indicated that he is likely to sign Assemblymember Amiano's bill. Locally, the county was successful in getting AB 260, carried by Assemblymember Gordon, to the governor's desk. This bill would extend until 2018, the county's Child Care Subsidy Pilot, which has successfully served hundreds of children that would otherwise have gone without childcare. Finally, as the board is aware, despite extraordinary efforts, the county has failed to pass legislation that would make a grant for the Maple Street Correction Center, if it were to come, available to the county to be used since we are so far along in the construction process. The sheriff's office is now moving forward with a revision to their SB 1022 application that would be used for the old McGuire facility to bring it up to date and provide more room for programming and other uses for the population that would continue to be housed at McGuire. I would like to thank, and perhaps it's appropriate that the board asked the president to send a letter of appreciation to Senator Hill for his yeoman efforts in, in trying to get the county qualified for SB 1022 funding. He was a great champion for us for a long time. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of Eugene Whitlock in the county council's office, the staff of the sheriff's jail planning unit, particularly Lieutenant Debbie Bazan and Bob Livengood, and of course, my staff, Connie Juarez-Durrell, along with Mary McMillan, before she retired, and all of their hard work in, in trying to obtain state funding for the construction of the Maple Street Correction Center. You will receive a full report detailing the governor's actions after October 13th so we know the final status of the bills. If you have any questions, please feel free to, to contact me.
And I will send that letter. I know all of the board members were making calls to everybody that they knew in the legislature, did our best as well, and appreciate the work of all the staff. Supervisor Pine?
What happens to my agenda, all of a sudden I get this? Supervisor, for County Manager Malby, could you tell us a little bit more about the possibility of use, of applying for funds for McGuire? I hadn't previously been aware of that. I mean, obviously, that's a facility that is really worn out, and when we do, when we able to free up, you know, when we able to get that population down, all of a sudden we, we have more opportunity. But I hadn't previously connected the state funding idea with McGuire.
The latest round of funding is for new facilities or for the rehabilitation of existing facilities that would render them more useful in programming and other things that the board has indicated they feel are very important. So we would take space that is used for population now, create room for programming and other things. I talked to the sheriff last week about it. He thinks it's a good idea. Mr. Livengood in particular has worked very hard to kind of position us both ways depending on the lay of the land. So I think we're pretty prepared to shift directions now and go for McGuire if the board thinks that's a good idea.
I think that's, that's exciting. I mean, I know at one point, there was some thought that, you know, maybe some specialized programs in mental health, or you could use that space successfully. Of course, we can't do much with it now because of the crowding.
Supervisor Tessier?
Just to follow up on that, you know, there's been a working group that's been working on the new facility, and it became very clear as time progressed, we're, we're butting up against the Department of Finance in Sacramento who just couldn't see past reimbursing us for the monies that we've already spent, even though we're doing things exactly by the book, by the state guidelines and all. So that working group had discussed at one point, should we not be successful with legislation or any avenue, that we should really take a look, because at some point, regardless, we're going to have to make improvements to McGuire, and so why not apply for that if we're not going to get the other one somewhere, we're going to have to pay for either or. So it seemed like a wise choice, and that's why our hope is that the board would agree that, you know, if it can't be that one for reimbursement, go out, you know, they did a needs assessment already on McGuire, and they're looking at, you know, what really needs to be done. Plus that whole aspect, I mean, the new facility is going to have lots of room for programming, so if we can make space at McGuire, we're going to be doing the same thing at both places, which makes perfect sense in what we're trying to accomplish. So I think it's a good move. And Connie, I also want to thank you. You worked so hard on this, this, for this whole time, and especially this last week, just trying to get this thing through, and Jerry and everybody, it was really incredible. So thank you very much for all your, and Eugene, I understood, did a lot of great work too, so thank you.
Actually, the old jail, the McGuire facility is really, whoever did that plan, he did a great job, lasted for 20 years.
It's a very versatile facility.
Do you think we should like, give a commendation to whoever did that?
You want here a naming opportunity?
Renaming?
No, no, I don't want to rename. We have just one speaker, and that's Martin Fox.
I appreciate your effort plowing through this budget, and I ask you to take a look at pages B2 to B5 of the recommended budget that refer to the county and non-county appropriated funds, because you won't find the Mental Health Services Act mentioned there. And, but curiously, the first full paragraph on page 2-5 of the County Manager's Report describes a Mental Health Services Act-funded prevention and early intervention program. The problem is, it's not supported by any of the performance data that the state auditor might be looking for, much less data that could show it is as effective, efficient, or economical at reducing criminal justice involvement in hospitalizations as Laura's Law. Laura's Law is a rational response to the threat presented by untreated mental illness, and it was certified as effective, efficient, and economical by the United States Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs. Some community-based organizations fortunately are better than others, but unfortunately, none of the ones identified on page 2-5 has any claim to fame other than the, being the intellectually and morally corrupt propaganda machines dedicated to their own survival above all else. Adoption of policies and procedures without the support of scientific evidence of usefulness and safety entails risk. That risk must, may be reasonable when social science and medicine do not provide an example that explains usefulness and safety. That risk, however, is unreasonable when the United States Department of Justice finds assisted outpatient treatment is effective, efficient, and economical, and is adopted in 45 states and three California counties. Please vote to implement Laura's Law. Thank you.
You may as well stay up there, and this time I'm going to limit you to one minute, Marty, for your next, you have one more. Card.
If he has anything.
The head of an organization that claims to serve persons living with mental illness admitted that his organization did not have a rational response to the threat of violence presented by the untreated mental illness of a man released from a 12-day-long psychiatric hospital stay during a meeting last Thursday with a Redwood City police officer who detained Mr. Ferguson for the fifth time in the last six months before he was released, and then threatened a young female resident of Redwood City. It's time to implement Laura's Law. The voluntary-only treatment policies produce injury and death, just ask John Jacob Berger's mother who was knifed in San Mateo last month. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Now for board members' reports, Supervisor Groom?
Thank you, President Horsley. I'd like to remind people that the Fifth Annual Active San Mateo County Conference that, that our office puts together is October the 15th at 8:00 AM at the Belmont Sports Complex in 550 Iowan Parkway in Belmont, and this year's topic is connectivity. So we're going to be doing some panels on complete streets, bike sharing, and some innovative new ideas in recreation programs with your bike and all of the pedestrian pathways that we're working on. So if you'd like to, register, it's no cost, and it is smcgov.org/activeSMC.
I'm going to have to put some air back in the tires of my bike, sitting in the car for a long time. Supervisor?
Make sure those training wheels are full, too.
Well, now we have bike shared on, it's okay. Well, now we have Bike Share Dawn, it's okay.
Training wheels, too.
What was the date of that again?
October the fifteenth. Belmont Sports Complex.
Thank you. Supervisor Pike?
I have no report, but since we're talking about bikes, I must say, I saw a person on the Bike Share vehicle.
Oh, really?
Chat with her, and she was very excited about it, so hopefully that's a good sign.
Great, great. Supervisor Slocum?
I would like to adjourn today in honor of John Dragon, who is the father-in-law, who was the father-in-law of my legislative aide Marcy Dragon. He was ninety years old when he passed away. John was a television pioneer who invented the split-screen technology. He won an Emmy with Ampex back in nineteen sixty-six. He worked for NBC as an electrical engineer, and he moved to New York, or moving from New York to Burbank with the movie studios there. And he was a great golf enthusiast, and I know that Brian and Marcy and the entire family will miss John, and our thoughts are with them.
Supervisor Tessier?
Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of James Joseph Loftus III. He passed away from cancer the morning of September third. He was the only boy amongst five sisters. He grew up in San Francisco, went to Reardon High School, San Francisco City College, and eventually Santa Clara University with a degree in civil engineering. He moved on to Alaska, just for the excitement of it, one summer, and ended up on one of the survey crews for the Trans-Alaska Oil Pipeline. He fell in love with Alaska. He went on to get a master's degree in engineering and moved and lived in Fairbanks where he met his wife, and he headed up a design firm, an engineering firm, that when you go into Fairbanks, the Rabbinowitz State Courthouse, UAF's Museum of the North, and the Centennial Pedestrian Bridge were ones that he worked on. He was also an avid runner, used to run a lot when he was living down here, and continued that on to Fairbanks, and also mentored a lot of runners in Fairbanks, so he will be sorely missed.
Okay, we will now adjourn to closed session. Is it long, closed session? Okay. Okay, we're going to reconvene a board meeting for today. Mr. Byers, could you report on the results of closed session?
Yes, gladly, Mr. President. The board met in closed session to discuss items A through D identified on the agenda as such, and the board took no action today.
Okay. All right, the first budget hearings for the sheriff's office, Sheriff Greg Monks?
Thank you, President Horsley, honorable board members, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Holland, and Mr. Byers. Oh, Mr. Saka, he's very tricky over there. Okay. Well, you have before you the recommended twenty thirteen fourteen and fourteen fifteen budgets, budget for the sheriff's office. And I have a lot of slides here, so I'm going to go fast. I'll go slow over this part, but I'm going to go fast, so please don't despair. So, as you can see there, the first-year budget doesn't change that much. There's a slight decrease in our total sources, slight increase in our total requirements, and a slight increase in our net county costs, which is primarily attributable to increases in some of our county service charges. Our position changes are slight, and I can go into some of that. We have some new positions in the area of technology, payroll, records, crime lab, and then, as you will recall, we added the school resource deputies as part of the Measure A. We've also added an additional deputy sheriff to our transit unit, so it brings our total headcount to seven hundred. In next year, there's more significant changes, primarily due to the additional positions that will be added for the new correctional facility that is scheduled to open in 2015. So there's an addition of fifty-seven positions to the sheriff's office that will bring our total headcount to seven hundred and fifty-seven. And the additional requirements associated with that are represented in the total sources with the addition of realignment money to fund those positions. And I think that's the, and then there's also some scheduled salary and benefit additions based on the contract changes that occur, and I think it's January of 2015. Major accomplishments for last year, we continue to achieve what I believe is a great success through our partnerships with the cities of San Carlos, Heflin Bay, and Millbrae. We continue to move forward on time and on budget with our replacement jail project. Despite the fact that our correctional facilities continue to operate at anywhere from one hundred and twenty to one hundred and forty percent of rated capacity, we've been able to maintain safety for staff and inmates and have avoided litigation in those facilities. We've instituted a new correctional facility drug dog, so we've got a dog that works inside the jails now, sniffing out narcotics and contraband. That has worked very well. And then, we continue to partner with our county and community partners on the realignment community corrections partnership. Our forensic lab continues to achieve success in the area of DNA indexing, the CODIS program, which hits against the known databases. You know, each month, it seems to increase with the number of hits in that system, and I'll talk a little bit later about some of the more significant cases. Our Sheriff's Activities League and our community-based programs continue to grow. We've secured over three hundred thousand dollars in grants to help support our efforts with youth. In two thousand nine-ten, we were serving about twelve hundred youths, and this year we'll be serving over three thousand. And then, we continue to be the fiduciary lead agency in the Northern California HIDA and drug trafficking area, and we've had some great success in that as well, helping to coordinate state, local, federal drug enforcement efforts throughout the region. So, we have some challenges ahead with the addition of fifty-plus positions for the new jail. We are working on a strategic recruitment plan, but we also see this as an opportunity to improve diversity within the organization, to increase the number of women and people of color that are in the organization, our ability to communicate with large sections of the community that we serve, so acquiring more bilingual deputy sheriffs and correctional officers. So, we're confident that we're going to be able to meet that plan and that challenge, working with our HR partners and looking at some perhaps non-traditional outreach to strengthen our ranks. We have also really grown and strengthened as an organization as a result of the partnerships with our contract cities, and the people that we've brought on have turned out to be, we've gotten a lot of real stars through that process. In the area of emergency response, thanks to the support of the board supervisors and City of Heflin Bay and the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, we have acquired funding for the new district coordinator on the coast that will be specifically focused on coastside issues and emergency response. And then, we work with the county, and we'll continue to work toward getting a new emergency operations center. I think we all are acutely aware of the deficiencies there, the fact that the emergency operations center where the county continues to reside here in the basement of this building, it's not sufficient, it's been called out by the grand jury. We all agree, and we're working closely with the county to look for opportunity in the proposed new building. We've been able to upgrade our emergency response capabilities, both for our department and for the county through grants. None of this, none of this equipment has been purchased with general fund money. We just took delivery of a new airplane to replace our old airplane, which I think was around when Don Horsley was a deputy sheriff.
I hope you have some younger pilots.
Well, we haven't gotten that far yet, don't get carried away. Anyway, we've been able to acquire a couple of new boats and a new command center, all of which was funded either through urban security initiative money, or in the place of the air, in the case of the airplane, drug forfeiture money. So, in terms of serving the youth of San Mateo County, we had the school safety summit following the Newtown shooting. As a result of that, we've brought together education, behavioral health, law enforcement, elected leaders from all over the county to work on response planning. From that came three task forces, the Response Task Force, which is an effort to bring together all the school districts, twenty-plus school districts, fifteen police agencies, the sheriff's office, to have a standardized protocol in how do we respond to those types of tragic incidents. The second task force is a behavioral health task force, looking at the issues surrounding mental illness and the role that that plays in these types of incidents. I think we are all familiar with most of these situations, unfortunately involve people that are suffering from some form of mental illness, and how can we strengthen our bonds and our communication between the various disciplines? This board, through Measure A, invested heavily in that this year, as well as by providing us with the additional school resource deputies, so I think we're making some great progress. The third is the information sharing task force. I know Supervisor Tessier is going down to San Diego with representatives from my office to talk to some leading experts on how do we share information between schools, mental health, and law enforcement? There's a lot of barriers that exist between us. Some are by law, some are by, I think, differing perspectives of the different disciplines. So, we want to find out what is appropriate to share, what can we share, and how can we try to prevent some of these tragedies before they occur. I mentioned earlier the two school resource officers. Thank you very much for the support on that. It's Measure A funding. We have, we now are responsible for over fifty schools with nineteen thousand students, and with the addition of these two positions, the ratio of school resource deputies to schools will be reduced from ten to one down to seven to one. We continue to build on the success of our Karen Project. It is in primarily North Fair Oaks, we're expanding to the coast side. We have had some very successful community academies. I think there's a picture of Supervisor Slocum and myself handing out diplomas to, I think we had over two hundred people in that one particular class. But it's a great way for us to continue to build trust and relationships in the communities that we serve. We have six academies planned in North Fair Oaks and the coast for next year. Gun buyback, I know this morning you had a item before you, and I know that this is a, that was a particularly sensitive subject, given what happened yesterday. I understand that, and I'm sure we'll work together to address that. But we had a very successful gun buyback program where we took six hundred and eighty unwanted guns off the street, there's included twenty-four solid weapons, and then our domestic violence firearms compliance unit continues to achieve great success. As you recall, that unit is responsible for following up on the domestic violence restraining orders, which always have a gun takeaway provision, and so we seized two hundred and fifty guns last year and three hundred and seven guns in twelve thirteen. Shared services, we continue to, I believe, lead the county in the area of shared services. The grand jury just gave a recent, I believe, endorsement and very positive report on our relationships with the cities of San Carlos, Heflin Bay, and Millbrae, and those cities who were fiscally challenged and were suffering from deteriorating public safety are now restored to fiscal health, and we've been able to improve public safety in those communities and demonstrate that these relationships, I think, work, and they constitute good government, and the winners in the long term are the residents. Civil enforcement, just really briefly, you know, that's an area of the sheriff's office which is a lot of times overlooked, the unit that goes out and does evictions, things like that. It was about a year and a half ago when two of our people went out to do an eviction. Locksmith opens the door, there's a man sitting in a chair with a gun, and he shoots himself in the head right in front of our deputy sheriff. So, it's a very dangerous assignment. We have done a lot in the past year. Captain John Quinlan and the folks that oversee that unit have improved training, improved equipment, and really taken some steps, learned from tragic situations like that and others. There's one in, I think it was Stanislaus County, where a person was, one of the law enforcement was shot. So, just something that we can't take too lightly. The forensic lab, as I mentioned, we continue to improve technology. Alex was telling me about a company that they're going to maybe do a beta test on some equipment that could change a DNA analysis timeline from a couple of days to a few hours. That's where technology is going. As it improves, as it moves faster, we'll have the opportunity to use DNA analysis on more and more cases, and even lower-level cases. We've had some recent really good successes. One was out of, we were requested by the New York Innocence Project to take a look at some, analyze some DNA from a old case where someone was serving time. Turned out that that person was not, it was innocent. And then, we were able, by inputting the data into CODIS, get a hit on the actual suspect, and we forwarded that information to the appropriate agency, and I think it was Connecticut or back east somewhere. And then, the other case was a nineteen eighty-six rape homicide case in our county. A young woman, seventeen years old, was hitchhiking, was kidnapped, raped, and murdered, and dumped up on Skyline. We re-entered that information into CODIS this year and got a positive hit on the suspect. And it turns out, he's serving a murder conviction out of Placer County, so obviously a serial killer. But, again, just, it's a powerful reminder of the, just how effective that DNA database is. Our volunteer program continues to grow, again, through our relationship with Millbrae. We got a great volunteer program that we were able to bring in, and a new volunteer coordinator, Chris Ko, and so now we have over three hundred and ninety-seven volunteers in ten different units that provide a tremendous service to the community and to the county in a number of different ways. They log about thirty-three thousand hours annually. As far as our future goals, we continue to manage the jail population as it's grown under realignment. I've reported out to you on that in the past, so you know that our population hasn't, has increased, fortunately, hasn't increased as much as we had anticipated. It's up about twenty percent, and it's up higher in the women, female population, which is attributable to the fact that women commit more of the non-non-non types of crimes. We're moving forward again on the construction of our Maple Street Correctional Center and the strategic implementation plan, the RDA plan. We're having a kickoff later this month for the next phase of that. And then, we have some plans, and I've talked to some of you individually about our plans for Coyote Point, to upgrade that facility to make it more of a contemporary range and training center. Just quickly on realignment, and I know you're going to hear about this from Chief Keen, so I won't spend too much time on it, but when it comes to the impact on the jail, really what we've seen is a hardening of the population. So, we used to, as President Horsley would remember, we had one of our pods where, for administrative segregation, where people were more locked down. Because of, since realignment, we've now had to convert four of our pods to either gang, gang members, disciplinary issues, keep, you know, try to keep people away from each other, so it's really complicated our ability. We have a lot more sophisticated inmates now that were used to going to state prison that are now here in the county jail, and it's created some issues for us. Again, just some numbers on eleven seventy Hs, how many have been sentenced, how many on split sentences, and the total numbers, and then parole revocations. Since realignment, all parole violators now do their time in the county jail. That's been a big impact on us. We've had nine hundred and eighty-nine parole revocations, representing thirty-two thousand eight, over eight hundred days, total days in custody. Average length of stay for these individuals has been thirty-three days. Maple Street Correctional Maple Street Correctional Center continues to move forward on time. And again, you're all very familiar with the project. It's going well, and it's gonna be a much-needed addition and improvement to our ability to house inmates effectively. And here's just a brief timeline, you know, the, we're just completing, we've completed the design, and we're completing the construction drawings, and we are still expecting to open mid-2015. And there's just a few of the particulars on the project. I mentioned the RDA, the strategic plan that we're moving forward with, which it really is to kind of redesign and modernize based on evidence-based practices, best practices, realignment, all that stuff, to how we move inmates from the day they're booked to the day they're released, and how do we connect with our partners like probation and health and behavioral health and community-based organizations, and how do we make the most effective and efficient use of our system, both now and when it is enhanced with the new facility? And we feel that this is consistent with National Institute of Corrections research about how to best manage a correctional system. Major IT and infrastructure projects I mentioned, the Coyote Point Training Center. We are moving forward on mobile data. That's a challenge for law enforcement with changing technology. You know, we're behind the times, but we're always kind of behind the times, you know? We don't have the ability or the money to get out on the bleeding edge of technology. So we kind of wait till things have been tested and proven to work. And so we're gonna move forward on getting the ability to get information to our people and back out in the field, whether it's writing reports, whether it's checking fingerprints, whether it's photographs, things like that. We're also moving forward on some better data sharing projects with other agencies, both in the county and throughout the region. So that's working closely with the Fusion Center in San Francisco and the Chiefs Association to share data and to get, make the most use of that data. And then working with the county, we are going, moving forward with the radio replacements and going to the new standard of seven hundred, using the P-25, but the seven hundred megahertz Agile pilot, we're working on different ways that we can work with the county on agile organization to include different ways of, you know, filling positions in a less traditional way that could perhaps, you know, save money, but also be consistent with, you know, the county's goals to, you know, be more agile and not just look at things in the way that we always have. Okay, that was quick, twenty-six slides. That was by special request of President Horsley to move fast, so I did so. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
You're a little bit five minutes over, but, okay. Questions? Any questions? Yes. Supervisor Slocum?
I had a quick question, Sheriff, thank you. You mentioned non-traditional outreach for recruiting, I think in the beginning of your presentation, and I'm just wondering quickly if you go to communities like East Palo Alto and other communities in the county to have job fair kind of things for the sheriff's office?
So we just attended a job fair in the city about two weeks ago, San Francisco. What we are working on is ways to reach into communities in our county. We talked about North Far Oaks, we talked about East Palo Alto. And, you know, it's a little early to roll anything out at this point, but one of the things, and I had a conversation with county manager last week about, we're kicking around the idea of maybe like a boot camp or something, because what happens is our hiring process is very rigid and is very difficult, and a lot of times we'll have an opening or a few openings, and then we'll get five hundred people, and it's just really difficult. And a lot of times, people might not quite be prepared for the type of process. And so we were thinking that whether it's similar to our cadet program or explorer program, or find some people that might have an interest or an aptitude for a career in public safety, bring them in, maybe put them through an eight-week course, almost like a citizens' police academy, but more focused on getting them prepared to do well in a hiring process. And that would be some way for us to reach out to some, what I would characterize as non-traditional hiring pools, and try to attract people to the organization. So certainly going into the communities in this county would be first and foremost, so we get people that are part of our community and that are interested in serving.
Thank you.
Supervisor Tessier?
Sheriff Bunks, I just have one quick question. You were talking about the training facility, and I know it's in dire need of help. Is there any timeline? I don't have my capital project list here from yesterday. Is it in the lineup for capital projects?
Well, we've had discussions with county manager. They've funded some early work that we've done out there. We have plans to spend some of our reserves on the project. We have been in discussions with a donor to look at potential of building an indoor facility there. So we're moving forward. We don't have, we don't have a specific timeline. We're gonna be looking, what I wanted to do as a next step is go to the Park Commission and present some kind of concepts to them, and then move forward. So I would hope that sometime during this fiscal year that we'd be able to put together a, an actual plan and start work on it.
Supervisor Pine, have any questions?
To your presentation. Yeah, Supervisor Tessier covered the Coyote Point Training Center. If you could just keep a surprise on that.
Sure.
We do hear sometimes about the noise concerns. A couple of questions about the new jail facility. So you mentioned in fourteen, fifteen, you know, we'll be increasing our personnel, the staff in jail. So I guess there's a, that most of that fifty-seven is for the new jail, but of course, some people will move from other facilities. So what is the approximate staffing, you know, when we open?
I believe the number is a hundred and three. Is that right? Somebody? Yes. Yeah, it's about a hundred and three. Hundred and eight? Okay.
Okay.
Hundred and eight is what we need to open it, and we're doing a phased opening. So that takes all the people that are currently assigned to Maple Street.
Right.
So the correctional officers, deputy sheriffs, LOSSs, everybody, because we'll be moving out of that altogether. They will move in these fifty-seven new positions. And then there's a small number of people that we'll be bringing over from Maguire, and that together will comprise the staffing.
Okay. And also, could you remind me what the current jail count is today and the number of individuals?
I think the, I think today was a thousand sixty-five is the total in custody population. There's about four hundred and something in the work program. So that's total system.
Right. What is Maguire approximately?
It's nine twenty on Monday.
Okay.
So that's rated for six eighty-eight, that's nine twenty. Women's rated for eighty-four, and, anybody know? One fourteen on Monday.
Okay. And then I had a question, maybe may as best address the county manager about our Prop one seventy-two money. I know we maintain a special trust fund for Prop one seventy-two funds, which I think we have a fair amount of money in that fund. Will those funds be used to help defray the jail costs, or do you have a, what is the plan for those funds?
That would be our intention to, we've been building up reserves in this fund for several years, and our intention is to use one seventy-two money to help defray and offset some of the costs of occupying the new jail.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just have one comment, actually. Actually, you know, we talked about this a little bit, but in the case manager position, when it says you're adding case managers to monitor inmate cases while in custody and research, best practice, et cetera, et cetera, it really sounds more like it's a function of probation. But the question I have is really, are you really, is, have you thought about the potential of like contracting with the probation department as, and will, if you don't do that, will those case managers be able to access the same kind of criminal justice information, information from the courts and probation?
Yes. That's primarily why we are proposing to do these positions in the sheriff's office, so that they'll have full access to all the data, full access to, you know, criminal history, all that stuff, as does probation. And our intent is not to replace or do anything that the probation officers are doing now. We want to adopt a kind of a multi-disciplinary team approach to how we manage inmates from the day they're in custody to the day we hand them off. And what I see probation's role is really kind of the air traffic controller, if you will, you know, they're, I mean, they're the constant through that process, and we work very closely with them and we rely on them very heavily. But where these folks are gonna have additional, one thing we've found out in studying our population, studying how we use the facility and how we provide programming, is that programming seems to be driven more on where someone is located in the facility as opposed to what their true needs are. So what we want to do is get, we want it to be driven by evidence-based, you know, tools, assessment tools. And then we want to be able to, you know, house people, we want to be able to put people in the programs that they need, not just the programs that happen to be there where they reside. And so what we're gonna be doing is taking some chances with folks and putting them into places. So really, this is almost like a super classification position, where they're gonna have, say, as to where they put people, what kind of programs they put them in. And frankly, for me, it's an accountability issue, and I don't say that in any way to, you know, insinuate that probation wouldn't do it right, but it's just, if they're making decisions about where people are housed, I need that person to work in my chain of command so that I can, you know, have that ultimate security control within the facility. Now, when it comes to putting them out early through a modified sentence or whatever, that's probation's job. They're the ones that make the call on that, and we'll support them. And so I, I'm confident we're gonna be able to work really closely together on that, and I just feel strongly that it should be in sheriff's office.
If there are no further questions? Do I have a motion? Or do you have, Carol, do you have a question?
Thank you. On slide ten, Sheriff, it talks about the realignment with the statistics since October of two thousand and eleven. What was a ballpark figure of these numbers before realignment?
Okay, so are you looking at this slide?
Yes.
On the revocations?
Yes.
Okay, so before October two thousand and eleven, the parole, parole revocations would go away. They'd go somewhere else. They'd come to us, and then we would transport them, usually to Alameda, because they would do their time elsewhere. So I'm not sure if we've looked at the, Melissa here, the numbers, do we see any trends up on that?
We have not compared it.
Okay. Yeah, we could take a look at that and give you some feedback, because one of the concerns was, now that it's not on the state's dime, are they gonna, but my sense is, and I don't know, maybe probation chief would know this, I think the state's under a lot of pressure not to run those numbers up. So my sense, or my guess would be that they're not, you know, overusing it.
Okay, because, I mean, we, it was suggested to us that we'd probably have about thirty or so a month, and this looks like, it looks like a little more to me.
Yeah. Yeah, so it might be. The reason, again, why our total population hasn't gone up to what we had expected is because our judges are really using the split sentences more than other counties and more than we had anticipated. So that's helped to keep our population from exploding.
Thank you.
Supervisor Tessier?
No, I was just gonna move forward to our meeting tomorrow.
Do I have a second? All favor? Aye.
Thank you, President Horsley.
Thank you, Sheriff Bunks. Now you're up again.
Normally, I would leave and then forget that I was supposed to do the message switch.
I recall that as well.
Thought about it, yeah. So anyway, you had before you the message switch budget for two thousand and thirteen through fifteen, and I won't bore you with the details, but I can assure you, it's a really good budget.
It's going well, right?
Anyway, there is a slight decrease. That's due to, we have to buy some equipment that costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but there's no net county cost. And, yeah, happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
Any questions?
I'll move that forward as well.
Second. All favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for your support. I also just want to mention the fine work of Alina Portis, our director, and Stacy Stevenson and Under Sheriff Carlos Bolanos, and the entire management staff. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the District Attorney's Office, Steve Wagstaff.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Holland, yeah, you were there, Mr. Sacco, good. No more switches. Thank you. Good afternoon. The District Attorney's Office budget for the coming two years is before you. We are nowhere near as complicated as the sheriff's office that you just heard, but that doesn't mean that I can't use more time than he did. And I didn't hear a single groan, so that's gonna endanger you in getting that.
I can't turn off the microphone.
You could also affect my budget on this. Our mission, as you know so well, is the, predominantly, it's the prosecution of offenders for conduct they've engaged in. But a side of it that doesn't always get mentioned is that for people who have been arrested, accused by law enforcement, it's to make sure that those who have not committed a crime, or those who we cannot prove a crime, are not prosecuted. And that's why, when you can see in numbers later, that of the cases submitted to us each year, that it's in the area of approximately fifteen to eighteen percent of those cases, we will decline to prosecute on that. And that's because our function isn't simply to prosecute people. It is to prosecute those which the evidence shows committed a crime and thus hold them accountable. And so our mission also includes, of course, our consumer and environmental sections. It includes our victim services. It includes our investigative services, which, working with local law enforcement, provide support. I could take an enormous amount of time to tell you what our Bureau of Inspectors does. It is studying what we provide to the agencies, particularly in these days when many of the local agencies lack the resources to do the proper investigations, and they turn to us for that in so many areas on that line. In terms of our performance measures, they are before you. The key point I think one looks at is the number of cases reviewed and prosecuted. That sort of shows that line. Now, that looks like there's a whole third that we don't prosecute. There's a number there of what we call, that we don't include in our cases prosecuted. We review approximately four to five thousand per year, what's referred to as citations by law enforcement, where they are running it through the commissioners. So we have to review it by law because they're for misdemeanors, and we have to look at whatever small reports there. But then rather than sending it through the criminal courts where the judicial branch of the judges would have to process it through, it goes through our commissioners, and they deal with it without attorneys through there, and those cases are handled in that fashion. And that, there's a sizable number. We don't count that. I didn't want to imply to you that that's a heavy part of our load. We have to read them, but it doesn't take long. So to include that extra four thousand in there, to make it nineteen thousand or twenty thousand, I thought would be misleading you, and I have not included it for that reason in that number. The true number of cases that we, that the men and women who prosecute in my office deal with is that fifteen thousand number that we are looking at there, and those are both felonies. You may have seen in the paper today that the FBI announced that violent crime in the Bay Area has gone up in recent times. Now, our county remains a safe county. There's never any taking away that we're one of the safest counties in the state of California. But we do have that in, from the two budget years ago to this past budget year, our felony filings, not in violence, I don't have a system that can break that down yet, but our felony filings went up seven percent on that line. I'm not seeking more positions for that, because I think it may be, I'm hopeful, it's simply an aberrational year, that it won't continue on that line. But it is worthy of noting that it went up seven percent. Misdemeanors much lower, like two percent, something like that, but fairly sizable, noteworthy of what might be occurring in the future. The victims served, again, we serve hundreds of victims, and trying to reach out with our victim services unit of approximately twelve employees to provide their, one of our primary functions, try and collect restitution for them, and that is what that unit performs. I thought a picture might be a better way to describe one of our, I view as our primary accomplishments in the past year, and that is that through your help and a grant from you through SMC Saves, we instituted a scanning project. And what it did is, on the left, you see what our file room looked like, and on the right, after we've done the scanning project here in the past year, that is what it looked like. There were thirteen thousand felony cases that were scanned in, that would have been taking up that shelf space and then going into Those that would have been taking up that shelf space and then going into storage. It was the last five and a half years of our case files. And it has made... Already made a difference, because in terms of providing discovery to the defense, getting information out to people who want it, we have it there, much less it is certainly creating some space as part of what I will... One of our greatest goals, which is, of course, to move to a paperless world in the District Attorney's Office. That is certainly one of our accomplishments, and I am grateful to the county manager, as well as the board, providing us that opportunity and the ongoing effort that we are seeking in that opportunity. Because the area, what we hope to... It's already... I view it as a partial accomplishment, but we're moving toward it, and that is getting a case management system. When it comes to prosecution, to try and say to you that that's what we view as having a computer that can make it easier to do the job, that doesn't sound like a primary prosecutorial accomplishment, but it is. It's going to make a revolutionary difference for us. You've seen before you the scale of where we are in this project. It has been done with, again, the help of Mr. Malpe and the county managers. Reina Faralis, in particular, has been wonderful help to us in moving forward with this project to be able to have everything go paperless. That is our goal. We are now in the process of next week... We've narrowed it down to three vendors. Next week, we will have demonstrations presented. We're having a lot of our staff go in and take a look at it and help us make a decision, which we hope to make in a couple of weeks. And then with the help of the county council and the county manager, be able to have a contract signed by the beginning of the year. The vendors have all said they can have it done, and we know what it means when they tell us they'll have it done. But they're telling us they can have that done by perhaps within eight months on that. My goal is that in a year, we will have that onboard. And it just doesn't mean that we're paperless. That's going to be a major adjustment for this office. But one of the big things, it's for the local police agencies. It's an enormous benefit to them, because they will be filing with us electronically, almost all of them, including the small agencies with all within your districts, including the Brisbane's, including the East Palo Alto's, including the Colmas, Broadmoors. They're ready to go and file with us directly. And us to go working with the courts, be able to file directly with the court. It is... It's something that... It's very, very exciting. I'm looking forward to when that day comes that we're there, being able to show it to all of you firsthand, because that means when... You know, the last murder case I did, I had a cart wheeled into the courtroom each day with about 20 binders on it. Now, what I'm... It's an adjustment for the lawyers to get used to this. They're going to be walking into court with a laptop and with everything in there, nothing else, no files, you know, and that. And that's the goal. We're confident we're going to be able to reach it, and it is very, very exciting. On a more practical level, for each of you and for the county manager, when you ask for, "Can you tell me how many violent crimes you have? Can you tell me information about individual cases? Can you tell me, for my own purpose, tell me how my prosecutors are doing and the outcomes on things?" I'll be able to tell you that. And these systems provide that. They have the fields that I'm... Right now, we're deciding all the fields that we want on that. It is, again, the enthusiasm I have is on this is very, very exciting on that. I think you will find the same. We always run into challenges. I'll give you... Of things we don't anticipate. I don't come to you asking for assistance on that, because I have a great staff that will work through it. An example, earlier this year, I was just sitting in my office watching the evening news and saw a segment being done by Channel 7 on Dan Neus' doing on a state prison collecting restitution. And they had collected millions of dollars in restitution from the prisoners, and they weren't able to send it out to victims to get it out. It was sitting in their account. And we said... And I saw that and said, "Are any from ours?" And you know what we found? Because we'd had no communication. State prison had not communicated, local DA's offices. We found 393 victims that state prison had money. We are now working with our Victim Services to go out and reach out to those victims. And it is... It's something that's taken a good deal of time, because now my investigators have to go find these people. Where are they now? And that's not easy. They don't know they're entitled to money. They haven't been knocking on the door, "Where's my money?" They just made the assumption that so much of our public does. You know what? Yeah, yeah, they ordered it. It'll never happen. Well, for at least a good group of these, we hope to be able to give them quite a bit. That's an example. You know, when Prop 36 passed last November, that was the one that took three strikes and said people can come back to court on the older cases and have it done. We have 31 of those cases going through the system that John Di Giacinto and my office are working on. It's a great deal of time. It's an enormous amount of time. Some of these people have been in custody for 20 years, and they are now... We have to get all their records. There's hearings. It's a major... But again, it's the staff and the DA's offices picking up. We're running with it. But those are our challenges. The governor signed a bill today to give juvenile offenders who have long sentences, been sentenced to prison. I understand he signed it this morning to say they can come back and have hearings. So we know these are things that we have to deal with, and we can do so with the hard work of our staffs, both mine and the private defender programs. In terms of the budget summary, you can see it's not particularly unusual. It has an increase this year of 3.9%. At least a third of that is a grant we have from this... Another grant from the State Department of Insurance for $355,000 to deal with premium fraud and from other sources. And we're fairly flat, and we're doing fine with it. We don't have any problems. You did give us in the last year, and I thank you for that, you gave us two victim advocates to go out there and work with the victims to get information, to get them restitution, to try and do a better job, because we can always do a better job. Until we reach perfection, that we never will. We'll always keep trying to do a better job. Same thing on that line. So that... You gave me one attorney to work in the realignment area. And she is a woman named Kimberly Parati. She now knows all the programs. She knows... Has exclusively a realignment caseload to try and help and decide who are the people who deserve the break and who are those that do not. And that's what we're working very hard to accomplish in that line. Our positions remain at the same level. We have more people than that working in the DA's office, because we do have a very vibrant volunteer program on that. We have both attorneys, attorneys-to-be, people who are waiting bar results. We have law students. We have college students, and we have high school students. Summertime around there, I'm walking down the hallway wondering who all these people are most of the time. There's an awful lot of strangers there. And they give us a great deal of assistance. And I think that's one of the reasons I don't need to come knocking on Mr. Malpe's door saying, "Can you spare me? Can I go through your couch and find the loose change?" Because we need more. We're able to do it with those people on that line. You know, I want to finish, before I take any questions, by noting the prosecutors. You know, we have spent, and you have spent, over the course of the last, oh, a couple of years, and since realignment came in, you've spent a great deal of time working with who are the people who we can help? Who are the people that we can provide services to to prevent recidivism? And we've joined you and supported that, worked with the courts, worked with all the various... The veterans courts, all the various other drug treatment courts to make that work. But you know, I don't want you to ever forget that there is another side to it, that there are, even in our county, there are some very, very bad people out there. And there are people that we prosecute, and they are the ones that we seek to hold accountable, convict, and lock up. The sheriff mentioned that fellow who committed the crime back in 1986, the kidnapping, sexual assault, and murder of the young woman. We are prosecuting that case right now on that line. Those type of people are out there. I talk about... You know from the news, a couple of people like the fellow out in Woodside who murdered his wife and tried to make it look like a suicide that went to trial. These are very expensive and time-consuming efforts by my prosecutors. When they're in trial, like that one there, seven days a week. You remember this past year, Tyler Hutchinson, a fellow up in Belmont who killed Albert Korn, the 88, was it, or 86-year-old man in his home there? There are these type of crimes and others. It isn't just simply the smaller ones. There's public corruption cases that are out there. You know, in the prior year, that my office prosecuted a fellow, Timothy Hanratty, from the Woodside and Potola Valley districts, who has now been sent to prison and ordered to pay approaching $2.5 million in restitution for what he stole in public funds. One of the ones I know has been on your agenda, and you've dealt... I had to hear about a great deal from another side than me, was the two people that we have convicted of embezzling from the mosquito abatement district. There are these people out there. These are not the people that we look to give the hand that I talked about in prior discussions with you. These are the people we look to hold accountable and why there still will be room in prison. We still spend our time. We still spend our effort on that. I think of what they do, and there's just one person... Last Friday, I had hosted an office picnic where we gave out our Employee of the Year awards, and a woman named Trisha Povak got the Prosecutor of the Year, because over the course of the last nine months, she has prosecuted six cases in the domestic violence unit. And that one... And she, in all these cases, went to trial. And she's prosecuted many more cases, but these are the ones that went to trial, all of them off weeks and weeks. She was almost constantly in trial. She's really here seven days a week. She's here all day voting. And again, you... I'm grateful to you that you do give remuneration to my employees at a good level, but they work way beyond that, and seven days. Last night, I walked out of this building at 7:30. I said goodnight to four of my lawyers who were in trial and working on their cases last night. And they do it not for any reason other than passion, no other reason that the public out there gets well-served. And we're not perfect. We make mistakes on that line, but we never cease to do it without that passion. And we do it with the help of our partners. You know, I am so fortunate to be the district attorney at a time where we have a sheriff like Greg Monks that it works so well with us. I'm so grateful to work with John Di Giacinto out there, even though we're on opposite sides of the table where we work. I can pick up the phone and call him and talk to him about issues and work through it. This does not exist in other counties, or that many other counties. A probation officer that I've now gotten to meet, John, this is wonderful. I congratulate the court on the choice they made with your help on that. He's going to take this county into a new level. I'm very, very excited to be in this job, working with people at this time. And I'm grateful to my staff for the work that they do, because they're the ones... I'm just the one up here talking, and they're the ones that are doing the work. And I'm very grateful to them for all of that. And I am grateful to you. I appreciate you giving us the resources to do the job. I believe you have given us... I say this in my speeches to service clubs and others, that this county has given this office the resources to do the job the right way, to serve the public. And I say we should all be grateful to the county government for what you've been able to do for us. That's my presentation. Thank you for your support. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No? Any questions?
I'm just hoping I get that Samhail Cares grant next year, if you see my office. It could look... That could be a before and after of my office, too. I just had one quick question for you. Steve, I see under the percentage of Victim Services rated good or better, you know, we've gone from 95% in 2009, 10% to 82%. Is that because of lack of staffing, and we ended up giving you staff last year to help kind of bolster that?
In part, but I'm going to put it in better part, that the way these measures were counted is they, first of all, out of several hundred, approaching 400 people that we sent out the responses, we got, you know, less than 20% response. And what we asked them to do was good, you know, whether we were... I think we phrased it, "Good or better." There was two other categories, poor or, I think it was fair. So if you took... We actually only had one person last year out of that number that was negative, thought it got a poor response. But a big part is also, I think, the resources we have. I think when I took office three years ago, I said, "One of the areas I wanted to improve in was Victim Services." You've given me people to do that. I expect a better outcome in that line for that very reason, because we really are these... And if, boy, if I could... I don't know how we got lucky enough to get the two who we hired, Michelle and Felix. These two people have unbelievable... It's... We've got to do whatever we can. I've got to take them to lunch every week just to make sure they don't get snatched up somewhere else. They're so good. But that would be the... Those would be the two reasons. Yes.
And I know in the past, we've always spoken about the need to help the victims. As, you know, we have one side, and then you have the victim side. And you've always done an excellent job of working with the victims, trying to help them in any way we can. So I know that's always a goal of yours. I was just sort of curious, because, you know, in smaller numbers, one or two can skew anything. So I do get that. That's why I was sort of curious.
I had the same question when I saw the numbers.
Thank you.
Just a... One question? Well, just... I'm sorry? Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
First, I was going to mention that John Malpe's coach doesn't have any spare change, as I hear. We're always looking for it. I'd be curious to get your perspective on the split sentencing, that, you know, we've seen a lot of that in the county, and just your opinion about that?
Big supporter of it. We, you know, for the first eight, nine months of it, it was going at a... In our county, it was going at a rate of about 85%. It's sort of leveled off over the two-year period now, as we approach the two-year mark, to about 60, about 2/3 to 70%. That still puts us in the very top group in the state. My office is a supporter of it. It is... There are times that we'd rather just lock them up, but the answer is, if we're going to do anything, if we're going to have any hope to do... These are lower-level offenders by definition. It's going to be with services from Mr. Keen and his operation. Otherwise, we'll just repeat the cycle. So we're supportive of it. These split sentences that are going on... And I talk to my counterparts, particularly out in the valleys, Southern California, where there's... One of the valley counties has a 2% rate of split sentences. I think many of them are just very, very low, because they don't believe in realignment at all. We think, well, we're going to try and make this work. And so we do. My lawyers go into court, and I think it's a great thing.
Thank you.
I'll just make a quick comment that I just want to commend you, Steve, and your whole staff. And you and your predecessor have always been extremely reasonable and, I think, effective as well. And I think a major reason that this county enjoys such a great reputation in terms of public safety, and I think it has really contributes to our record of having really a safe county. So I want to thank you and your staff as well.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Supervisor Slocum, are you going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Yes, thank you.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, signify of saying, "Aye."
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much. Smolpe, thank you.
Next is the Coroner, Robert Fullcroft.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Holland, Mr. Sacco. I'm here today to present my 2013, 14... 2013, 14, 14, 15 budget. And my budget is certainly less complicated than those of the two previous speakers and much less costly.
Thankfully.
Our mission is very simple, is to provide independent investigations and determine Our mission is very simple, is to provide independent investigations and determine cause and manner of death. Our accomplishments for twelve thirteen, we continue to average about investigating three thousand deaths, and out of the three thousand deaths, about three to four hundred of those require further investigation, and that's when we have the most contact with the families that are in a vulnerable spot. And all my deputies and my entire staff, for that matter, make sure that those families are taken care of and given the proper information that they need to move forward with their final arrangements. We have been fortunate enough to send three people at no cost to the county to advanced training in New York. The Office of the New York Medical Zimmer has received grant funding since nine eleven to provide training to deputy corners, and it's a very competitive process. Three of, like I said, three of my investigators have gone through that course. Two of them have gone on to the advanced course. One of them leaves, one of the two leaves next week to start his training. He also, this other deputy that's going to the advanced training, put himself through with the tuition reimbursement from the county to the advanced death investigation class when it comes to arson investigation. We have worked very closely with risk management and increasing safety for employees. We have a lift system that's in one of our vehicles that does about ninety-five percent of the lifting when we have cases that we need to bring into our office, and that reduces our claims to risk management, hopefully. One of the things that I've been talking about the last couple of years is the morgue remodel, and that actually starts next Monday. We will be working out of Peninsula Hospital temporarily, our pathology staff will be, and they've been very gracious and have bent over backwards to accommodate us. When I called up to ask, they said that we were a community-based hospital, and that would fall under their mission statement, and very grateful to them and their staff for allowing us to do that. Our goals for twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, we have taken on reorganization of our hours that we're staffed to provide the best coverage that we can with the most people, and we have moved to an on-call status for the last anywhere between six to eight hours of the workday. That has worked out very well, and also we have just done that with our pathology staff as well, and that is to increase efficiencies and reduce the amount of extra help or overtime that we would need to use. We continue to close cases within forty-five days, and we continue to, our customer surveys that we send out to the families that we serve continue to come in about ninety percent or above, rating our services good or better. Our two-year budget plan is moving right along. In our next phase of that two-year program was, is to eliminate one of our support staff. Partially, that is due to working with other departments such as human resources and the county manager's office to provide our budget. We should not have any effect operationally with doing that. We have plenty of staff working at certain times, and then also our interns and volunteers will be able to help out if there's any problems with that position being eliminated. We just got done redoing our case management system that will allow the deputy corners to do these cases from start to finish. That just went online last month, and we're working towards getting everybody on board with that so they can work on, get that going as soon as possible. Our budget for thirteen fourteen is just a little bit over three million dollars with not any significant changes. And the following year, it's two, just under three million at two point nine, and that is also reflective of the one less staff position. Over the last few months, we've been challenged with our deputy corners, we've been working about fifty percent of staff in that area, and that is due to family leave, and we have a couple of work, working with comp injuries that we're working through, and hopefully we'll get them back in the fall. And we're also in the process of recruiting extra help deputy corners to help us, help us out with that. One of the programs that we started a few years ago is our Save a Life program, and that unfortunately has not been as active as it has been because of the staffing shortages. We've focused more on our mandated services, and my commitment is still there, and we are going to be moving forward with that program once our staffing level gets back up to normal. And one of our major issues that we'll be working on also in this next couple of years is to continue to find efficiencies in the organization and to reduce our department Over the last ten months, my office has had multiple fatalities. I say multiple, going to a case where there's been two or three since last December. We probably have had almost a dozen. And recently, we've been, most challenging was the limousine fire and the Adriana air crash, and shortly after that, time was the fire at Woodside Road where we had one death. My staff has really, really stepped up. I appreciate all the work that they do. They've gone above doing what they normally have done to make sure that we don't, you know, go over and overtime, and they've just been really, really great, the entire staff, and I'd like to thank them for that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Questions, just, just a quick comment. Robert, I really do want to also applaud you and your staff. You have handled some really major issues, the limousine fire and the airplane crash at SF International. I thought you did a really fine job, and just wanted to let you know, I thought, I was really appreciative of that. And for those who don't know, I have seen you dealing with the families of people who've been killed, and you do with a great deal of sensitivity and kindness, so I appreciate your, all the work that you do. Can I have a motion to move forward?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Robert.
Does anybody need to take a break for a couple minutes? Okay, okay, you're okay. Okay, John Keane, probation.
Well, I wish I could promise you I would be that short and brief, but it's not a good sign when a person grabs a cup of water.
It's your first time up, so we'll haze you just a little bit.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so welcome, and we're really glad to have you on board.
Thank you very much.
I've seen a lot of great things of you already, so.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much. So I'd just like to start off by saying, good afternoon, honorable supervisors, County Manager Malby, Assistant County Manager, and Budget Director Sacco. I want to present to you, oh, thank you very much, I'd like to present to you the probation budget for two thousand thirteen and fourteen, and fourteen and fifteen. The mission statement for the probation department is to protect community safety, reduce crime, and assist victims of crime through offender accountability and rehabilitation. My agency has had the benefit, I believe, of several major accomplishments over the past year. We would like to highlight a few of them. First and foremost, realignment. Realignment has been a significant challenge, not only for our county, but for counties throughout the state. I believe that Samantail County Probation Department has done an excellent job in not only creating a program from scratch, but then responding to all the variety of different challenges that the state continues to thrust upon us. Total realignment referrals for year day twelve thirteen were three hundred and forty-nine. Of that three hundred and forty-nine, a hundred and fifty-one were post-release community supervision. Those are your traditional non-non-nons. Of that three forty-nine, there were a hundred and ninety-eight that were mandatory supervision, which is our new PC eleven seventy. Those are those crimes that can no longer go to state prison. Our original number since the start of realignment for Samantail County has been six hundred and seventy referrals to our county. We're currently supervising four hundred and five. The total number of revocations for brand-new law violations are seventy-seven. The total number of revocations overall for all violations is one hundred and thirty-nine. Other accomplishments, we are very happy to present to you, is continued collaboration with our county partners for service delivery. We know that that's going to be one of the most important things, to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible and also providing services to the folks that we work with in a way that's consistent all the way through. We've built relationships with community partners, our CBOs. We've looked at places like East Palo Alto and Daly City and other places where many of our most notable CBOs work, and we've reached out to them, and we're very happy about the relationships that we have forged. We've conducted the first county-wide evidence-based supervision practice conference, and I'm actually going to tie into that a little bit later on with some of the benefits from that. We've improved our processes by providing a single point of contact for incoming realignment cases. One of the things I think that we do very uniquely and very positively here in Samantail County is that we actually have a realignment division. In that division, my deputy chief, where Brazil, as well as his director, work really hard to make sure we have a very single point, a very focused single point of entry, and we also have a dedicated PRCS unit. We've also worked to support to enhance case management sixty days prior to offenders releasing from jail. That's going to only be enhanced once we work collaboratively with the sheriff. He mentioned it earlier, and we do recognize there will be case managers within the sheriff's department, but I don't think that's in any way going to minimize the effectiveness of the program. We're going to be able to work more collaboratively with those folks moving forward and have a kind of singular mission, because the challenges around case management is that oftentimes you have too many kind of cooks in the kitchen, so to speak, and if those folks aren't talking, you can create an environment where we're kind of also working, you know, at the different ends of the spectrum with each other. So we'll work collaboratively on that with the sheriff's department. And we've also implemented and worked to support the county's Veterans Treatment Court. Really important note to make is that that court was originally awarded, recently awarded three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars by the Bureau of Justice. This will provide a case manager and a part-time data analyst, as well as staffing, training, and program support. One of our major things that we want to highlight and which we will continue to move forward is to make sure that we work in a way that allows for fiscal stability and health. And this slide shows what we believe to be a positive upward trend. We've also focused in on the department reorganization as we try to look at our own internal practices and keeping in mind what the county's position and focus around an agile workforce. We wanted to look at ourselves strategically and figure out where do we most need additional staff? Do we have staff that are there who can do the work already? And really, how can we look at our programs to be more efficient overall? We've also reorganized our department back into four major organizational operating divisions. So now we have adult services, juvenile services, institutions, and realignment, as I mentioned previously. Other key accomplishments, we conducted our first probation-led countywide joint operation. It's called Operation Strong. While it focused primarily on checking in on our realigned population, it was a great start for what I think can be a larger collaborative effort moving forward. And I think it set the groundwork to show that probation is committed to being an active and strong community partner. We also implemented the Correctional Assessment and Intervention System, which is called the CASE, our risk assessment pre-screening tool. The importance of this pre-screening tool is it helps to reduce workload for our staff. It helps to weed out those individuals who are lower-level offenders, and we are able to save workload and time by not doing full assessments on individuals who won't need much of our services. We've also developed a PRIA policy. PRIA is the Prison Rape Elimination Act of two thousand three, which is a zero-tolerance policy for incidents of sexual abuse within, inside of facilities, excuse me, inside of facilities. These are national requirements for state, local, and state, local, and federal facilities. We've also secured a grant and created the Proud Parenting Program. The grant was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. This program is designed to break the cycle of intergenerational violence and delinquency by strengthening parent knowledge and skills. So major challenges, we've identified a lot of the things we've done well up to this point, but we realize there will be some challenges moving forward. One will be the continued uncertainty that realignment will bring. As you know, SB one oh five was signed by the governor a few days ago, and at this point, we're not quite sure what that's going to mean for us. We don't know if that's going to be an increase in population, but one of the things that it's important to note that this is a short-term fix. It's not going to deal with overcrowding issue permanently moving forward. It will help the governor get down to the one thirty-seven that the three-judge panel has mandated that he do, but it is a short-term fix. So I think that it's important for us to think about that and realize that there's probably going to be potential for it to impact us down the road. And also, too, we have to realize that while we look at working collaboratively with our CBOs, evidence-based practice with our CBOs is going to be critical. It has to be a very integrated approach, and so we want to help build capacity for many of our longstanding CBOs who really kind of need to understand how to present what they do and how to demonstrate that their outcomes are sustainable and measurable. So we have to take the responsibility of helping them to build capacity in that arena. So our major goals for thirteen fifteen, one will be to improve performance and efficiency by reallocating resources through the department. Mentioned that earlier. Now that we know that we have, what we have in the cover is just now what's the best way to use this in a very effective measure. We're going to work continually with our partners to look at new treatment modalities to serve the realigned population. We know that of the identified risk and needs for our folks, we know that substance abuse and anger management and housing are some of those major things we know that they need. So how do we figure out how to provide services to them in an efficient manner? But also, how do we look as a county to be innovative? There are a lot of new modalities and treatments out there. There's some interesting drug modalities around treating specific types of offenses and certain types of substance abuse modalities, so we should be looking at those things. What works for us, what will help support us? We want to continue to expand evidence-based practices. We want to use data to make better informed decisions, and we want to fully implement Camp Kemp. One of the things that we are very proud of with regard to Camp Kemp is, as you know, in mid-August, we were able to restart the camp. It has been broken down into two phases now. We still have our original program where we have young ladies who will come in and will stay with us, be sentenced from kind of a residential format. But we've also, through the hard work of Chief Remington before me and the staff of probation, we've created what we're calling the Girls Empowerment Program. This is a very exciting opportunity for our county. The Girls Empowerment Program is looking at those young ladies who are not quite at the point to where they're ready to be put in a camp, but they're showing signs that we really should be paying attention to them. We know that when we are looking at young ladies, we know that it's a relationship-based thing we have to be concerned about, and what this program does, it takes those young ladies, offers them an opportunity to come to our camp for school during the day. It's an eight AM to six PM program. They go to school during the day. We provide breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We also provide transportation to bring them there. In the afternoon, there is evidence-based programming, many of it, which is gender-specific, some of it's trauma-informed as well. What we're trying to do is really stave off these young ladies finding themselves coming to be a part of the system on a regular basis. We also, as the DA mentioned, and something we know is a considerable issue for us as well, we need to increase restitution collection rates. When we looked collaboratively at our program, looked at our department, we realized that one of the things which we could do is reallocate resources in some areas that really would not only help our department, but also help our county function better. And so we think in putting a deputy and assigning them to help increase restitution collection will also help support our victims who oftentimes, as the DA mentioned before, are not supported as they should. This person will come in and help assist and work closely with the DA's Victim Witness Program to provide a very collaborative approach. And we also will look to develop and update our departmental policies. Like many agencies, we have policies that, many of which need to be reviewed, to make sure that they are consistent with not only programming that we're doing now, but also recognizes that we are in a different facility and have different challenges that may not have existed five, ten, fifteen years ago when those original policies were created. So we look forward here at our budget. One of the things that will bring your attention to is our net county costs will increase slightly from two thousand twelve thirteen to thirteen fourteen. That's a three percent increase. That's mainly attributed to increases in salaries and benefits, as well as a small amount that we're going to take in as part of the CHEE one eighty program that is now under probation's guidance. You see our total positions were increased from four hundred and eight to four hundred and twelve, as an increase of four. Three of those positions will be realignment-related. There will be one deputy probation officer, one legal office specialist, and one fiscal office specialist. And then the fourth position will be the CHEE one eighty coordinator, which will be taken care of completely. For fourteen fifteen, you'll see, once again, there's a slight increase in the net counting costs between thirteen fourteen and fourteen fifteen. Once again, it's going to be salary increases and benefits, and also, at this point, we will have full responsibility for CHEE one eighty, which will drive those costs up a little bit. Total positions will remain the same, however, I will say that as we look closely at our own internal resources to make sure that we have what we need and we can accomplish the goals, not only of the department, but of the county, we will always look within first before we say we need additional staff or we need additional funding. We're always going to look within first, but as I mentioned before, we want to keep in mind that there are still considerable things happening on a state level that can influence what we do, and as we look to provide better supervision services, not only for the realigned population, but also for all populations that we service, keeping our caseload sizes within those reasonable numbers is going to be critical in achieving that goal. And I believe that's all I have. I think I skipped a slide, but unless you want me to go back.
I think you did great, John.
I can go back and cover it if you need me to. Trying to.
I reminded Mr. Keen that anything over ten minutes and he starts losing budgets, so.
I know, so I was under the pressure, I was under the gun.
You did a great job.
Under the gun there. So, and really on that sheet, the only thing I probably would just want to just highlight is, one of the things that I want to just kind of also put on the radar moving forward for thirteen through fifteen is a potential workload impact. We are moving to phasing out our legal word processor classification within the department, and I think that we are preparing ourselves through training, and it's going to be a phased approach, but having had the experience of going through similar plan in another agency, I want to be mindful of some of the things that could potentially come from it if we don't do it in a very measured way. I saw risk management costs go up considerably primarily around workers' comp and ergonomic costs, so just want to put that out there as something that we may want to keep our finger on the pulse of moving forward.
Okay.
And before I take your questions, I just want to take a time and take a moment here rather to thank my staff that are here. You can see, probation kind of comes out, and I like that. I like that my team is here. But also, I want to take a moment to really thank the men and women of the probation department as a whole. As you know better than most, they've had a very difficult year, but the reality is, I want you to know that they have worked hard and have never stopped working hard. Great work is being done every day by great people. So I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to congratulate them on their day-to-day activities and to recognize the folks that are here today supporting me. So any questions?
Supervisor Grubbs?
I just have a comment, chief. I want to thank you and Cal for working so hard to put Camp Kemp back. It's one of, I thought it was just one of the best programs that we had and enjoyed the time that I spent visiting the young women there and thought, and what they said to me and what I felt was true, is that what a difference this was making in their lives, and so thank you for reinstating it. I think it's really a valuable program.
Thank you, supervisor. One of the things that we really hope to show you this time next year would be then continued enhancements to the program. We really believe that we can create a model program that other counties will be jealous of, to be perfectly frank. There is opportunities there to really do some preventative work, which I know is really important to the board. How can we stop this cycle? And as we mentioned with the Proud Parenting Project, it really is about looking at things from a very intergenerational perspective, and if we can reach our young ladies and help to kind of curb that train, so to speak, not only do we help them, but we help future families that they will be a part of.
Any other questions, Supervisor Tessie?
Just a comment. John, I think you've done a tremendous job. I know you've only been here a short period of time, but just our CCP meeting the other day was. day was extremely efficient. We've got a lot done in a very short period of time, and I think the team was really working well together. A couple of things that I sort of noted, I'm really proud of your department for coming up with state grants, going after different dollars to be able to do new and innovative programs. I, along with Carol, am very happy to see Camp Kemp and, you know, that Girls Empowerment Program, to me, early intervention is key to all this, and I think that's what you just addressed. I also am pleased that you, I know it's very hard coming in, but the Department reorganization, I think the staff appears to have adjusted well. There's always bumps in the road there, but it seems like I see smiling faces with your staff, so that's always a good sign.
Well, I warned them they had to smile, so, you know. No, just kidding.
And I know realignment's been very tough, and, you know, things with the state are always sort of a moving target, so we still don't know exactly how that's all going to play out, but, and I also appreciate the collaboration you've already shown with the different departments. You know, we had health there the other day, we had the sheriff's department, we have our local agencies. You know, the beauty of this county is that everybody does work very collaboratively, and you could already feel that and see that at the CCP. So I really look forward to seeing the more accomplishments. You've done a tremendous job, the entire staff this year through some tough times, but I really look forward to seeing next year when you've had a year under your belt and all these new things and some, just the change in that evidence-based and the cognitive behavioral things we're talking about for some of the programs in our facility and outside of our facility. I just think there's a lot of exciting things coming down the pike, so I thank you and I thank your entire staff for all their hard work.
Thank you, supervisor. I just want to echo your comments. I think that it is obvious that collaboration and all working towards a common goal is the environment that we live in here, and so I'm very appreciative of that and very appreciative of being here. I think the fact that our split senses, for example, still lead the state is, I think, a response to the fact that as a county, we believe in realignment. Even though it's very difficult, it is a great opportunity for us to do not only some innovative things, but to really work more collaboratively across the board. So thank you very much.
Supervisor Pine?
Thank you for your presentation, and very much enjoyed working with you since you've joined the county. It's, you share the perspective that, you know, you're making, you're emerging as a very strong leader for us. On Camp Kemp, like the rest of my colleagues, I know we're all very happy that it's open. Just to give you a little more background on that, in the past, it was my understanding we closed it because of, there was concerns there weren't enough participants and budgetary issues, so how did we surmount that? Do we just put a higher priority on it, or was it some other way?
Well, I think there's a combination of both. I think it is a higher priority. What Chief Remington was able to start was this conversation about realizing the priority of working with our young ladies, knowing that we have an opportunity to not only work with them, but to reach kind of larger scopes within a family. So that's something that we knew was an issue, and we kind of really wanted to vet that out to a larger degree, but I think as you look at the program, some of the challenges around population, getting the numbers you needed to make it feel viable, I think with this new program, having a hybrid approach to it allows us to reach our numbers. So for example, I believe we have about 15, Larry? 13. Thank you. So those numbers are only going to increase as we move further along. We have very strong buy-in and support from the bench. Both of the deputy chiefs in both institutions and juvenile are working collaboratively to make that happen, so I believe very confidently that as we build out more programming, we'll have more young ladies who will be able to be a part of this program. Additionally, I have a vision for not only having it to be those young ladies that we've identified with issues, I would love for it to also be a place for families. So when we look at ideas like parenting classes, more trauma-informed care, many of our domestic violence cases, we know it's a family situation. It's not just the victim or even the perpetrator who's at the center of it. Really, if we look at opportunities to increase family engagement, I see Camp Kemp as a place where those things can happen. It's a safe place, it's a place that doesn't necessarily feel like you're going because you've been, you're in trouble. So I think it has a much wider potential for usage than the way in which we used it before, and not to say that the way we used it before was bad, but I think we recognize that it was challenging, you know, trying to get a commitment for young ladies to go and spend the next close to a year in a program like that can be challenging.
Okay, and my other question went to Achieve 180.
Yes.
And, you know, from what I've heard about the program, it's been very, very effective, but I recall that it was highly dependent on federal funding, but because we had done such a good job with it, we, you know, we've caught some more grants, but what is the status of the funding of that? I assume the federal funding is still a major component of Achieve 180?
It is, and it's...
And what's, you know, what's the future, that future funding stream look like?
Well, I'll be very frank with you, it's a challenge, but I do think that we recognize the importance of it, so much so that probation is taking Achieve 180 into its budget. I think the reality is, is that as a probation department, as a county, we're very unique in having an Achieve 180 here, much like what we have with Service Connect. Other Bay Area counties, other counties in this region don't have anything that's similar to it. So while I think that as we search for continued grant opportunities, and I think we're going to find, as we use more evidence-based practices, as we, as with the DA and as with the sheriff mentioned before, new case management systems are going to allow us to be able to produce better numbers, which will make us even more competitive. So we're going to continue to search down the road to find funding opportunities for Achieve 180, but as it stands right now, we're going to, we're going to take in on our umbrella and help to support it and keep it a model for success, and then, you know, actively look for opportunities to help support it. So I, my hope is when I come to you next year around this time, we will have had some other opportunities for funding to help support it, because I think it definitely has proven itself to be a viable resource for our clients and for our citizens in the county. It's just now figuring out how we can make it sustainable, and really, quite frankly, how can we replicate it maybe in other areas? Maybe we can do an Achieve 180 version for our juvenile population. There are different things that we can do with it once we show that we can sustain it.
Thank you. I just, supervisor...
After you, Mr. President.
I was just going to make one comment about the, well, the programs that I really, I mean, everybody's talked about other things already, so I won't go over that again, but the program that for comprehensive parenting education for young parents between 14 and 25, I really appreciate that you're doing that, because it's not only potentially, you know, limiting their life potential, but it's also potentially limiting the life potential of their children, so also I really appreciate that program that you've initiated. And I have to say also, you know, the department really suffered over the last year until you've come, and so your energetic collaborative leadership is really welcome, and I really see your department blossoming as a consequence, and so want to say how much I appreciate you being here. And with that, Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you, chief, for your leadership and to your entire team. It's all very much appreciated, and especially wanted to thank you for your work at One East Palo Alto and in the city of East Palo Alto. And I read something about a grant the other day that Maya Perkins sent to us all, and so I wanted to single her out and say thank you for her great work on trying to get additional monies for the probation department in the county. Thank you, Maya. And then, as the new person on the board, I just wanted to invite you to invite me to come up to take a tour of Camp Kemp, excuse me.
Well, definitely. One of the things we're going to do is, you know, you want to bring people in, but it's kind of like, you know, you buy a house, it's kind of fixer-upper, and you want to make it look nice before you bring people over for your housewarming, so that's kind of where we are. It's funny, you know, Larry's been challenged with having to try to get everything kind of restarted there, so, and the grass is cut, so it doesn't look like, you know, it's been abandoned, but we still want to make sure we have it up and running. So what we hope to is probably engage all of you with an opportunity to come out close to the holidays, so you can be a part of sitting down with the young ladies and also seeing all the hard work that's been done. I mean, I really appreciate and respect all of the accolades, but I will tell you, I'm just simply a reflection of the staff that we have. If my staff didn't work as hard as they work, I guarantee you, I would not be sitting here and, you know, and receiving the praise that you're kindly giving to me. I'm just a, I'm just a person who gets to stand here and talk. They're the ones who are really doing all the hard work.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, before you leave this budget, one of the programs that doesn't get a lot of recognition in the probation department, but has been very, very successful over many years, is the Electronic Home Confinement Program. And I hope the experience and the lessons learned from the successful use of that program can be applied in the future to the adult programs in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Malpe, and thank you, Mr. Keen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
On favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Next is our private defender, John DG Ascento.
Mr. President, as John comes up, I'll do a quick presentation of the budget in a minute. I know John won't be at a loss for words to fill in the blanks.
He never has been before, so...
As you know, the private defender program provides competent legal representation in accordance with the Constitution and the requirements of the state. Individuals that are determined indigent by the court are represented by the private defender program. Our program is unique for a county of our size in the state in that we have contracted for many, many years with the private bar in the county to provide private defenders. The major accomplishments of the program in fiscal year 1213 have been to complete the fiscal program evaluation, which has been done. The challenges that we face during the next two years include always maintaining a pool of competent private defenders. It seems sort of like an oxymoron with so many attorneys out there, but to provide competent legal criminal representation is always a challenge, and our county, again, is fortunate to have been able to do so for so long a period of time, and certainly a compliment to our bar in this county as well. In addition, providing legal services to the county indigent population using the most cost-effective methods. A quick overview of the budget is that there's no change in the total revenues. The requirements are going up by about $300,000 a year, and that is a net increase in county costs, and that reflects the 2% COLA that was previously awarded by the board, and a 1.5% increase next year, which again reflects the contractual COLA represented by the board. The private defender program in terms of revenue collects about $650,000 a year from its clients for services and receives a $300,000 reimbursement from the court for juvenile dependency hearings. And before John speaks, I just want to say that it's been a pleasure over many years of working with John. First and foremost, he's a stalwart defender of the clients that he is responsible for representing. He also watches the county dollar. He runs an extremely efficient program, and if you think there's no change on my couch, you should see John doesn't even have a couch. And finally, in matters of public safety and criminal justice in the county, John has always stepped back and taken the big picture and has always been a voice of reason and sanity in sometimes disagreements that get rather irrational, so I appreciate all those things about you, John.
Thank you very, very much, John. I really appreciate those enormously generous words. It is part of, in my view, what makes this county work. As Steve Wagstaff said earlier, we do work together, and in the county manager's office, starting with the head, the county manager and his staff, this always has been a culture of respect, and actually, those words came from some folks who visited us from Texas, who were trying to find out what makes the private defender program work and this county work. And they interviewed people from the budget director to everybody, a bunch of lawyers, a bunch of judges, and as they were leaving, they said, "We figured it out. You have thrived because you are in a culture of respect," and that goes from everybody in this county that, in the criminal justice system. I really appreciate all the years I've been fortunate enough to be here, and though I'm closer to the end of my career than the beginning, I am not yet at the end, hopefully. So I just want to add a couple of things to John's very kind remarks. We do have a couple of challenges that are new to us. Of course, we're very honored this year to have been honored by the American Bar Association and the National Legal Aid and Defender Association, and to have received a really positive and helpful evaluation by the committee of this board. Some new things we are facing, of course, are parole hearings. I've never conducted one in the 36 years I've been a lawyer, because they were never conducted here, so I have to give a thanks and a nod to the parole people in the state of California who came down and sat our lawyers down and said, "This is how it works, and we're going to do everything we can to be cooperative and helpful," and they have been good to their word, because I almost knew how to spell parole hearing, but it's all pretty new now, so we're doing real well with that. The other thing, it's brand new, that Steve Wagstaff mentioned in his conversation, was how different it is to have Prop 36 on the books and how much work is involved in that. This is the proposition for folks who have been sentenced to 25 years to life under the three-strikes law, and it does involve an enormous amount of work. I expect, as it is appropriate, it will be litigated heavily. We're working at that. It's very time-consuming. We had a lawyer from Stanford who came down to give us a training on it the other day, and he said, "Well, you only have a couple of folks who are out," and I said, "Yes, because we're going to litigate the rest, apparently." So we have a lot of work to do in all of that, but I'm very happy to, this is our 44th year here in San Mateo County, and I can afford to be brief thanks to John Malpe for one thing, because at the end of October, you will receive my annual report, which is very detailed, and which, in the last version, somewhere around 30,000 words, so I can really do it a lot shorter verbally, and of course, you don't have to read that, I hope you do, but, so that's all of my remarks. Any questions you have, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Supervisor Pine?
Just one question. We, when I had participated in the review of the private defender panel, which I enjoy doing, learned a lot, and one thing, you know, we talked a little bit about was, you know, trying to improve our effort to get feedback from clients, to get a better sense for, you know, how they feel the services have been performed, and if you could provide any update on your efforts in that area?
I have to confess that I was out for three or four weeks recently, and I haven't updated myself on that, but the last, when I did leave, I had a health issue, but when I did come back, my staff has revised it again to incorporate and include juvenile and their parents. How many have been sent out, I cannot tell you, but I will get that to you as soon as I can find out for certain, because I'd be guessing right now, and I don't want to do that.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, John, on the great work you do. I know you mentioned your challenges around the parole hearings and Prop 36. I think we all fall into that same thing because of realignment, so I think, you know, we're all learning and growing together with all the realignment components, so I appreciate that you're still smiling even as you're saying it.
It's going to be fun.
That means you're going to be tackling those challenges with a smile as well. So, John, thank you for your great work and for all the private defenders that really helped us here in this county. Thank you.
Thank you very much, supervisor.
Just one quick comment is that I've known you for many years, and I've known the private defender program, even with your predecessor, and I think that defendants in this county get really excellent and, I think, outstanding representation. And sometimes when I was deputy sheriff, I didn't particularly like the representation or the cross-examination, but they did a great job, and I would be sorry to see you go, but we'll welcome your predecessor and continue with the great relationship between your office as well as the board of supervisors, and I know all of our other partners as well. So with that, motion to...
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
On favor? Aye. Thanks, John.
Very much, Mr. President. Thank you.
Glad to see you here today.
Thank you.
And the last is the county support of the courts, Mr. Malpe.
Mr. President, members of the board, this will be the shortest presentation you'll receive. This is entirely a non-discretionary budget. You have to do it, recommend approval.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we'll reconvene tomorrow morning.
All right.